To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, April 7, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center in 3500 Edgewater Drive in Sebring. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move.
Please silence your cell phones, too. I forgot that. I need a motion to approve the action agenda. We gotta have roll call, I'm sorry.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
I need a motion to approve the action agenda.
Motion to approve.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
First thing on the agenda, action agenda, is Resolution Number 2017-031014. A resolution of Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve change order number six with EO Cook Construction for a decrease in the amount of $37,737.17 for the purchase of concrete products for building B and C by the district for tax-saving purposes.
I so move.
Second.
As President Gilpin mentioned, this is change order number six from EO Cook regarding the maintenance building project. It is for the direct purchase from John O'Concreet on all the concrete material and rebar for buildings B and C. The entire amount of the deductive change order is $37,737.17, which includes a sales tax savings of $2,632.83. Change order number six, in conjunction with change order number five, has provided the district total tax savings from concrete purchases in the amount of $6,612.56. It is management's recommendation that the change order be approved in order to acquire the cost savings.
Any questions?
None for me.
Public comment?
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Resolution Number 2017-0310-15, a resolution of the Sun and Lake Sebring Improvement District confirming findings of benefits from levy of district operations and maintenance assessments.
I so move to approve.
In February 1998, the Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution stating the finding of benefits derived from district operation and maintenance assessments. The attached amendment adds a paragraph for code enforcement and changes the provision for fire protection services. This document hasn't been updated in a while, so I feel like this would be, you know, a good time to go ahead and update. And, you know, if anyone has ever asked you, "What does my assessments pay for?", this is the document that, you know, provides the information on what district assessments do pay for here in the district, so.
Guys, have any?
No. None for me.
Public comment?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Resolution Number 2017-0310-16, a resolution of Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District accepting the amended district policy manual to include additional provisions related to the maintenance and repair of the drainage system.
So move.
After reviewing the district's policy manual on drainage, I'd like to recommend a few changes in relation to Section M 1000. The first change is the paragraph M-1001 for responsibility. I'll go ahead and read verbatim what were the recommended changes. The district is responsible for all stormwater drainage within its boundaries and may perform any maintenance within the road, right-ofways, and drainage easements, as deemed necessary at the district's sole discretion. Maintenance includes, but not limited to, removal of accumulated sediment and vegetation within the rights of way and drainage easements to ensure proper stormwater runoff and flow of water. Property owners with irrigation lines and sprinkler heads, mailboxes, and any other items that may exist within the district right-ofways or drainage easement are advised that such items may be damaged or removed during maintenance. The district will make every effort to assist the property owner in identifying personal property in the right-ofway or drainage easement before maintenance begins, but the district shall bear no responsibility for damage to personal property caused by properly performed maintenance in the right-ofway and drainage easements. If personal property is damaged during maintenance, the property owner shall be responsible for any and all replacement costs. That's M-1001. M-1002, we added one sentence to that paragraph stating that the property owner shall be responsible for installation and all costs associated with work of any driveway connections and culverts permitted by the district office. Section M 1003 is exactly the same. Section M 1004 is exactly the same. And then the last paragraph we'd like to recommend is M-1005 on culverts. If the district finds that culverts installed by property owners have failed, the property owner will be notified and required to make the necessary repairs to ensure proper flow of water. Property owners may seek district assistance with such repairs by submitting a written request. All culvert repair materials and the labor charges will be the financial responsibility of the property owner. The district can require the property owner to make payment prior to the work commencing or, at the option of the district, allow the property owners to make payments over a period of time with the execution of a written agreement. But that's a synopsis of the changes that management is recommending.
Guys, you got a comment?
I have no comment.
Public comment?
My name is Ray Baker. I am here because Joanne Vickerman is unable to be here because she's in the hospital. I guess my first question would be, is if it ain't fixed, if it ain't broken, why are we fixing it? What is the cause of now putting this burden onto the taxpayer instead of with the old system where the government paid for it?
Sir, I'm sorry, are you speaking of this particular project?
Well, no, I'm speaking to, as I understand this, you are changing the rules as to who pays for the work that's being done. Is that correct?
No.
No.
Well, Mrs. Vickerman has received a notice that if you do drainage in front of her house, that she will be charged to put her driveway back together.
That's correct. It's not the district's responsibility to repair your driveway.
Is that not the way it is now?
No, that is the way, that's the way it is now. The district has no responsibility to repair a private driveway.
Okay. I guess my first question, then, would be, why would you be doing this project?
Tanya, you want to answer that, or Dave?
I'm sorry, I don't think his mic was working. Are you asking, "Why are we doing the project"? Are we talking about Sunrise Drive? I'm sorry. What was your address, sir? I'm sorry.
It's, Joanne's address is 22 to 7.
Okay.
Sunrise.
Oh, okay.
Okay. This lady's 89 years old, she's in the hospital, and now we're going to have her driveway dug up and her sprinklers and this sort of stuff. And from what I understand from your letter, is that there's going to be a cost of $2,500 to put it all back together again. If you're going to tear it up, why don't you fix it?
It's not the district's responsibility to repair stuff that's, personal items that are put in the district's road right-ofway. So what we're saying is that if you want us to fix it, we're willing to fix it, but we're not going to fix it for free.
Okay. I guess my first question is, why are you doing it?
I bet you'd have to ask the board, because this is a board-approved project.
There's a drainage problem there on the whole street. Water in driveways and...
Well, apparently the residents don't feel that there's a problem enough to warrant digging up eight different driveways. So maybe the board could tell us why the project is going ahead.
It's going ahead if we decide to do it, because there's a drainage problem there.
Okay.
Whether you agree or not, there is a drainage problem there.
Okay. Well, who says there's a drainage problem?
Our engineer and all of us that have looked at it. Tanya, maybe you can answer it a little better.
Have you, have you asked the residents if they think they have a drainage problem?
No.
Sir, the Sunrise Drive discussion is item E on the action agenda. This is, this action item is just to approve the policy.
Sir, Ray, we're going to have a discussion down on E of this problem. This here is...
Well, yeah, I just would appreciate the discussion before you make the, before you change the bylaw, that's all. Would that make sense?
There's no change in the bylaws.
We're not really changing anything.
We're not changing our procedures, we're putting our procedures in writing. These are procedures that we have already implemented here in the district.
Well, my understanding is that this has happened in the subdivision prior to this, and the residents were not charged.
Didn't you misunderstand?
I don't have a lot of information, as I said, I'm speaking for Joanne. I don't have a lot of information, but my understanding that this project has taken place in some other parts of the subdivision, but at that point, the residents weren't charged to put their properties back together again. Is that fact true or not?
No.
No, that's not true.
So the question still remains, why do we feel, at this time, that these properties have to be dug up for drainage, if the residents themselves don't feel it's a problem?
Sir, we've had complaints, excuse me, we've had complaints over the last year of that whole area. Homeowners have written letters to us, and actually, it's been for years, there's been complaints about that area. We finally, finally decided to fix it. We wrote letters to all the residents, we talked to a lot of residents. Some people afford, some people aren't, aren't right now. But this project has, for years, been a big complaint about that area for drainage. I mean, obviously, you know, it's not wet right now, but once rainy season comes, the residents start calling. We have, we have letters from, from people all on that corner complaining about the drainage, and that's why we want to fix it.
How many complaints would you have had in that situation? Because it seems that the neighbors that have talked about it, that have all received letters, or the ones that are not complaining, are the ones that are going to be paying for it.
Ray, excuse me a minute. Ray, why don't we get this done, and you can come back up when we get to that part of the discussion, but thank you.
That's fine. I just think we need to raise these issues before we start voting on things, that's all.
Thank you. Tom, wait, Tom, Tom, wait till we get to E.
This is not public comment?
Go ahead, come on.
Said, "Wait for something"?
I just want to also question the policy of changing an internal policy before, for something like this, which I think is actually the purview of SWIFTMUD. And I'm curious to know if SWIFTMUD has been called in to weigh in on the change in structure for the drainage in that area. Has SWIFTMUD been contacted and approved this change?
SWIFTMUD has not been contacted, generally because it's already a ditch system that's supposed to be in that area, and the ditch system is not currently functioning for this particular case. But the whole area is intended to drain out through the already-installed drainage system, and there's, there are low areas where the water is accumulating and is not able to drain. So a permit modification is not required to do what we're doing.
According to SWIFTMUD, there's two different methods of handling the stormwater in this area, and what was initially approved was not a drainage conveyance system, but rather a system of swales and dams and percolation. And it's been indicated that, yes, they would have to weigh in on any change. There is, there's a difference in the amount of time for stormwater to be, to exit the area in terms of a drainage system versus a swale and dam system. And just my understanding, I'm not an engineer, but I have been told that SWIFTMUD would be required to weigh in on any changes to the initial design, which they did approve and was constructed under permit and then accepted for maintenance by the district.
The, the system as designed was a conveyance system for the swales, and we're still going to be having swales in the area. Currently, when we have an excessive storm event, the intent is for the swales to allow the water to flow out of the area, and currently, there's no, it's a low area and it cannot overland flow into the inlets that were designed. We're providing an alternate method for them to actually, for the water to actually get into the inlets.
An alternate method?
Yes.
Which is a change from the initial design, which was approved by SWIFTMUD?
The sock pipe. The sock pipe is the alternate method.
Sock, sock pipe, this will defeat the percolation intent of a swale and dam system. Seventy-two hours is the, is the amount of time that the area is supposed to drain after a storm. That's the initial design with a swale and dam system. If it's a conveyance system, it drops down from 72 to 36. And whatever you're doing now, if you're defeating the percolation intent of a swale and dam system, my understanding, I'm not an engineer, this is just what I've been told, that the, it will have to be designed in order to remove that stormwater within 36 hours, or about half the time that the initial system was designed for. Thank you.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Resolution Number 2017-0310-17, a resolution of Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District authorizing the general manager to execute claims of lien on behalf of the district.
Question approved.
On second tap.
Supervisors, since claims of lien have deadlines, the district attorney is recommending to, for myself, to actually sign the claim of liens, since I am readily available during normal business hours to sign the documents. I've provided to you a copy of what a claim of lien looks like, so usually, when I'm signing, I usually have, what, 30 to 40 at a time? So this just gives myself authorization to sign.
Would that, would that be in any amount, the lien?
Any amount, yes.
These are generally for, these are what we do for the operation and maintenance assessment liens, when we file them of record or code enforcement liens.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my, my question would be, I think it's important that one of the board members is aware of all the liens that are being filed, so if the president signs it, he's obviously aware of it. First of all, I don't have a problem doing this. And secondly, is I'd like to know why there is a problem. You know, obviously, the, we decide to file a lien, we decided that on a certain date, and I can't believe that the lien has to be filed like the next day. There's got to be a time period in there, so why all of a sudden is this urgency to get this done before some deadline? Does that make sense?
I don't know if it was necessarily issues of urgency, it's happened in the past where we've, we've, we've needed, we've needed documents signed, or liens signed, and Tanya was the one that was readily available, and the board president might not have been readily available. So we just figured it would be easier to put this in place so that we had an alternate in case it was necessary, because otherwise, there is no alternate.
So when you say alternate, so you're going to have the president sign some of them? Or she's just going to do everything?
I guess it's, you know, it's, we can just have, we can put authorized representative, and it could be the president, or, or her, or whoever.
That's fine. I'm just curious why there's such an urgency, what's creating the urgency?
Can you explain the tax deed process and how that works and the timing of the deadline?
Oh, as far as the, well, yeah, and there's, when, there are certain deadlines that we want, and there's obviously lots of property in the district. The district liens are automatic, you know, by, since the district's inception back in '74, the liens are continuing, continually existing on the property. However, when, they're not always, while that's, you know, people would not know about that unless they research back, all the way back to the '74 documents. And so when there is an outstanding operation and maintenance lien, I mean, operation and maintenance assessment is past due, we like to file it of record, so that anybody is, so that anybody that's checking into the property is, understands that, yes, there is an outstanding lien currently, you know, and the, and the amount, so they can calculate how much they would have to pay if they wanted to get clear title. So, and when the tax deed process is going on, there's lots of timing issues, and so we, that's where we're usually trying to catch up. We look at the districts, that the lands are becoming available for taxes, we look and see if any of those are district properties. If they are district properties, we want to make sure that we have a lien recorded, so that anybody's going to that tax deed sale, they know that if they buy it, they're not only going to have to pay the county taxes, they're also going to have to pay the district's assessments. So sometimes those, that's where the timing issue comes into it, is sometimes when those, when those, the amount of time from when we have notice of when the tax deed sale is going to happen, and when the tax deed sale actually occurs, the research that has to go into finding out if there's affected properties, we may have a, a timing issue.
So what's the time period from when a property becomes past due, to when you actually file the lien?
Well, I honestly, I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't know when, is, there...
You mean, it's not like a week or less, or something?
No, 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 no. And I'd say, we don't always, I say, it's not, it's not, we don't continually file these, because it costs money to record, you know, put these in recording. You know, every time we record one of these documents, it costs the district money, so there's no requirement that it be done. We're doing it, when, the main issue is when a, a property is coming up for tax deed sale, we want to make sure that anybody that goes to that tax deed sale is going to have notice of this, by, you know, immediate notice, by being able to, through review of the public records.
But in most of these cases, there is time for the president to sign them, right?
Generally.
Yes, you're, we're talking about right before the sale.
Correct.
Anything else? I, I wouldn't mind, in the future, if, if the president would just get a list, Tanya, of what it is, and...
Absolutely.
You know, and that way, if there is an emergency, but it'd be nice for the president to at least have that, like Kurt said, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Understood.
We could put, we could make it part of the general council's report, with the foreclosure list and litigation list, we'll just make a lien list.
Public comment?
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Okay, item number E is a discussion on the Sunrise Drive drainage. You guys have any comment first, or you want to?
Okay.
Or listen, just a minute, Tanya, go ahead.
I wanted to make a quick comment.
Okay.
The district provided the Board of Supervisors a maintenance drainage plan, and as part of that plan, Sunrise Drive was, you know, was an option there to, for the board to look at for drainage maintenance. I believe it was number four or five. We, we did prioritize what the drainage maintenance plan was here in the district, so that, that gives the public and the board a background. Our district engineer prepared that maintenance plan. It was provided to you maybe six months ago?
Yeah.
Or so?
Yeah, about six.
So Sunrise Drive was presented to you in that plan.
Okay, public comment?
Can I, just a minute. Can I interject one thing? I thought there was an alternate plan as well to this, that Mike had come up with.
There is.
There is.
Okay.
President Gilpin, I'd like Mike Hurley to discuss the, the options for the driveway. He did meet with some homeowners yesterday, and I'd like for him to present what the findings on that were.
Okay, Mike.
Good morning. We have three options. We, first of all, we tried to meet with all the residents, or as many as we could. We have some pluses and minuses, people do want it. First of all, when we started this drainage, everybody wanted it, until they found out what it was going to cost. And I, and so, so when, once we had all the cost, turned them over to everybody, that's when, that's when all the problems started. We did come back with three more options. The first option, we originally came up with, for a double driveway, would have cost about $5,400. We went back to the contractor, and Drew and myself met with the contractor, we tried to meet with all the residents, and I want to make sure, everybody understands, we've been, the district has tried to work with all residents here. We understand the cost, and we have been trying to work with everyone. So the cheapest cost we have per driveway right now, because we changed the whole plan, is $945 per driveway. So if, if this is double, obviously, it's, it's double the price. We also are going to provide financing over, I think it was two years, to pay this off if people couldn't afford it. We do need the drainage done. For the last two years, we've, we've received many, many calls to have this done, and I really think it's time that we have to start addressing the drainage programs here. If anyone has any questions, Drew and I will answer whatever you need.
President Gilpin, can I explain the options that are up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. The original pricing quoted by the contractor is there at the top, called original pricing. That was, the cost to the homeowner was going to be $2,600 per driveway, and the contractor was going to cut 15 feet of concrete from the edge of the pavement to the driveway. We went back to the contractor and asked, "Is there any other options for the homeowner?" So he came up with option one and option two. Option one is to cut from the edge of the pavement 10 feet in to, I guess, where the swale ends. So if you, for, for option one, there's going to be 10 feet of concrete cut for $1,450. The, the last option is to cut the concrete three to five feet within the swale area, and the concrete would be cut, removed, and replaced. concrete would be cut, removed, and replaced. So, for that option, it would be $945 to the homeowner. So, he did work with us to come up with different options on the driveway cut.
Okay, thank you. I guess before we start from the public, does anybody wanna say anything up here first?
I assume, listen to the public.
Okay, I would, okay, public then.
Good morning, Nettie Bowden-Wiser, 2218 Sunrise Drive. I understand that this project was, went into litigation, or whatever you wanna call it, six months ago. No one notified me about this project until February 13th, 2017. However, Ms. Kennedy stated that she spoke with the homeowners that have the double driveways at a board meeting, confirming to you that she had spoken to all of us regarding this situation. She did not speak to me, neither did Mr. Hurley, or the contractor, the engineer. I feel, from what I've read, that this responsibility is of the district, and if you start to go and change this policy, it's not only gonna affect us, but in some time, it's gonna affect you. And I know all of you are golfers, and I understand that, and I understand that you wanna dump a lot of money into this golf course. Well, I think that maybe the drainage situation might be a little bit more of a priority in all of Sun and Lakes than dumping a bunch of money into one tee boxes. I'm a golfer too, and I love Sun and Lakes, but I think that this drainage issue is a little bit more important, and should be brought up that way. I appreciate your time.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I appreciate that comment. Yes, we are, probably all golfers on this board here. I will say that initially, when I signed up for this job, my responsibility was the whole district, and not just the golf course. The fact that I golf doesn't mean that I don't care about my home and my drainage, and I'm very concerned about drainage. In fact, that was one of the top items I had listed that I wanted to accomplish within the district, and had many, many meetings as to how we will address this district-wide drainage problem. So, kinda take a little bit of offense to the fact that we're only interested in the golf course, but thank you.
I didn't mean it that way, I meant that I thought the district should put the priority on priorities, and drainage has been a problem in Sun and Lakes for years, years and years and years, and it just seems like it's getting worse, and we're not doing anything about it, and it seems like Ms. Kennedy is pushing it to help. The homeowners pay for this, and this should be something that should be taken into account in the budget.
And that's something I'd like to, that's something I'd like to address. I think there's a lot of people in the audience that are operating under the misunderstanding that we're requiring, the district is requiring the homeowners to pay for the drainage project. That is not the case. This is a $54,000, $57,000 project on Sunrise Drive. If we were to divide that up by the number of houses affected, you would each be paying $7,000 or $8,000. We're not asking for that. The district is simply saying that we have no responsibility to replace the driveway portion that we cut out in doing this maintenance project. We're happy to help you and replace your driveway that we cut out for you for small costs, otherwise, we can, we can cut the driveway, we install the drainage, and then we leave. We have no responsibility to replace your driveway.
Thanks, Dave, but I, and too, I heard again that we're doing something different, that we do not have the responsibility, as Dave said, to replace your driveway. So, if anybody has an idea that we're doing this, something new, and we changed something, it's always been there, we put culverts last summer on ABC Streets, and I think there was 10, 12 people that had to replace their driveway and their covert, at their expense. So, if anybody out there understands, we are not changing anything, we're not doing anything different, we're just on Sunrise this time, so go ahead, Tom.
Tom Coste, resident, also of Manor Hill. The, I think we've got several issues here that are, that are kinda nipping at the heels of this whole situation. The statement that was made earlier that the district has never paid for damage to driveways, aprons incurred by district repairs. I suggest you contact Kayanne Rice, who has been a resident on Sunrise Drive for many years, probably 25 or maybe even 30 years with the Manor Hill Owners Association. She reports that a drain line was put by the district, placed by the district, under her driveway apron, and she was, was not required to repair that driveway herself. The district did so. Now, that, I think you should check with Kayanne on that. When we talk about precedent, going back 10 years, 2010, five, six, seven years ago, when we began talking about drainage issues over in the Moronda area, there's quite a bit of discussion while our longtime district attorney, John McClure, who is the principal of our current district attorney, attorney's law firm, Mr. McClure weighed in quite heavily, and it's a matter of record in our minutes, of the comments that he had about who's responsible to pay for these drainage issues within certain areas of the district. And it appears as though it's possibly inarguable, and a matter of opinion, and a matter of analysis of the statutes and the district ordinance, and a number of things. It's a sticky wicket. The district has spent over several hundred thousand dollars in fixing drainage problems along the frontage road and along that, the west edge of that Moronda area, with regard to some new retention ponds that have been put in, some pumping stations that have been put in to move stormwater away from the back property line of those commercial establishments. That was done at no cost to those commercial establishments, totally. Now, I don't believe any driveway aprons were destroyed, but it was done with district assessment payer money, and I guess the analysis was made by the board that the entire district, including people who never even go into that area, would benefit by it. Well, there's, there's another debate as to whether or not, I mean, everything that we pay our assessments for is supposed to be based on the benefit that we, as individual property owners, get from that, that project. And it's very difficult for somebody that lives along Schumacher to, or just, just near the back entrance into Sun and Lake, from Schumacher. It's very difficult to argue that they benefited from any of that pumping station up in the northeast corner of Sun and Lake. And yet, their assessment money was paid for that, so that's an argument that hasn't been, that's unsettled. Now, this, then along come the ABC Streets, where the district did charge the, several of the homeowners over there out of, I don't know, I think there were over 100 of them, and I think there were seven driveways that got torn up, that those, but a covert was put in, it was a replacement of existing infrastructure. What we're talking about on Sunrise is not a replacement of anything, it's a redesign. And what we're doing is placing a pipe underneath the driveway apron, which is initially designed to be four to five inches below the edge of the pavement, per the Polston Engineering as-built drawings that are on file at Southwest Florida Water Management District, as part of the drainage plan for Manor Hill. I believe that when the district took over the maintenance responsibility for Manor Hill, for that area, because that's their property, for that drainage structure is the district property, in other areas, it might be a homeowner association property, but that's not the way Sun and Lake is set up. Sun and Lake is the, is the entity that takes over maintenance responsibility after the initial construction. I believe that there's a responsibility that the, that those systems be monitored for proper operation and for proper performance by the responsible party. And I, I'm guessing that I would think that there's possibly even an annual report, or a periodic report, that has to be sent to somebody that says, yes, they're functioning properly. A couple of years ago, the district in-house public works manager informed property owners in this area that the system was functioning as designed. Now, we've got, I'm not, I don't know how many property owners have actually complained, but it appears, in looking at the topography drawings of that area, it appears that everybody from that area of Sunrise, all the way down to where the tennis courts are, where the initial developer built his, his home on, it's near number 14, that pond and number 14 on Deer. That's the lowest point in that whole area, so that whole area is gonna be drained ostensibly by any changes that we make to the drainage design for Sunrise, and yet, here we got an expense that's being caused by a redesign. Not, to me, that, a redesign of a system is not maintenance. That system was put in place 20-some years ago, back in the 90s, when those roads, when Sunrise was, was built out. Those drawings are on file at Swiftmont, and they were, the drainage system, the stormwater conveyance, or drainage system, it's not, it's not a conveyance system, it's a detention system, designed to percolate. And those parameters were used by that initial design, now we're going to put a pipe at a lower elevation than those driveway aprons to move water out of that area and convey it somehow, to somewhere. To me, that is not maintenance, I think that's another discussion. So, I really, I hate to see us go ahead and try to set another precedent about who's gonna pay for damage, I mean, we've got, there's, in the ordinance, it says that damages will be paid by the party incurring that's responsible for creating the damage. We've had a, another contract, now evidently, our contractor has come up with several alternatives of what can be done, I don't know if those are soundly engineered alternatives, but we've had here in a, in a meeting right here in this room, by a very experienced contractor in this area, who says that cutting a short slot in those driveway aprons is not sound designed, that there'll be settlement, that there'll be issues by doing that. So, I really think this whole thing, because it's so far-reaching, I mean, we've got 12,000 lots in Sun and Lake, and we're embarking on a method of taking care of drainage issues that could be wide-ranging and extremely expensive, and to change horses 40 years after the establishment of this special improvement district, to change our policies about how this is all gonna be paid for in the future, to me, is, is not the right way to go with this. I think that this ought to be held up right now, and that a serious, well-engineered analysis of this whole drainage issue ought to be embarked on before we go any further with setting precedent, thank you.
Uh, Dave, could you make sure you keep track of the time a little better?
Technically, we don't have time constraints on this section.
Anybody else?
Ray Bowden-Wiser, Sunrise Drive. I'm just wondering if a lot of this has to do with priorities? We spend a lot of money on the golf course? Is that really necessary to have new tee boxes before take care of a drainage problem? That's one. My pet peeve is that we're spending the money on the restaurant. Now, I wanna know if this district is in, for the people here, or if we're in the restaurant business. Now, my next-door neighbor owns the Depot Restaurant in Avon Park. If any improvements have to be made in his kitchen, or dining room, or whatever, he has to pay for it out of his business profits. If this restaurant that we have here, which not very few people, well, I won't say very few, not all people in this area, even Topsternice, that restaurant, why they cannot pay for their improvements out of the profits from the restaurant? And that's a matter of priorities. Another particular one is, you're running a gymnasium, so forth, well, not a gymnasium, exercise room over there, and there may be three or four people a day who go in there, yet it's maintained, and they have it monitored there. Most people who wanna go to a gym, go to Gold Gym or one of them. I think we should get our priorities in a row here, thank you.
Anybody else?
Good morning, Bill Nordbrust, a resident. I can sympathize with this gentleman here, and if they have problems with their drainage, I understand, that's an ongoing thing for 10 years here. Okay, fine, but what I object to is that somebody's saying, well, we have our priorities, we have an exercise room, we have a golf course, we have a dining room, and stuff like that. Also, we have schools. All right, I'm paying for schools. Everybody else is paying for schools. It's part of the deal being here, all right? So, try to understand, we have recreation, we have our governmental services here, you have to understand that we have to share this with everyone. Now, I don't drive down Cortez Drive, and they wanna repair it, okay, or extend it, whatever, I'll probably never go down there, that's okay, fine, but you have to understand we're all in the soup together. Now, if you possibly can get your drainage problems squared away, my Tom had an excellent presentation here, and I hope somebody who's listening. Thank you.
Rick Holbert, resident. You know, I've been sitting here, listening to everybody, and I'm really disappointed in this audience, and I'll tell you why. Everybody is complaining about themselves. Nobody wants to chip in and help, nobody wants to chip in and do anything. Everybody complains about, well, we gotta complain about the restaurant, we're gonna expend money on that, we're gonna complain about the golf course, we're spending money on new tee boxes. Everybody's complaining about the drainage system. I've been, I was on the board for four years, and all I wanted to do was fix the drainage system. Now, that we're doing something about the drainage system, everybody's complaining about the drainage system. So, what are we gonna do? What do you people really want us to do, as residents? Do you want us to sit on our hands and do nothing? You want us to raise the fees so we can pay for everything? That isn't the case. The case is, we gotta pay for what we get. So, please, understand, everybody's gotta pay a little bit for what they get, and as far as I'm concerned, whatever we do, we have to do together. Please understand, this is a community, a very beautiful community, and everything we get should be paid for by ourselves, and we should pay for it a little bit at a time, not by raising our fees, not complaining about everything that we have to pay for. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sir, 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 you can get back up here if you want to.
Supervisors, the Sunrise Drive project was a, one project out of four projects that were bid out for $189,000, so this is a $189,000 project that excavation point will be working on, in addition to Calatrava, Arvita, and Florida Avenue.
Yes, sir? Just one comment, you know, I think that probably people are not aware how serious it is. I sent pictures to the board and to Mike Hurley, and maybe we should circulate them here in the area, and show people how serious this problem is, because it inundates the road, everything. My neighbor gets a pond, free, free of charge, and it all originates from what happened in the center of the area. So, it is something that is sort of cause and effect, in my simple opinion, I'm not looking at all kinds of legal details in the-
I'm not looking at all kinds of legal details in, you know, whatever the organization determines, but the logic is that it's getting worse. And that is a problem. It's more serious than a lot of people realize, because I've lived there for 20 years, and the first 10 years I never had a problem. But last 10 years, it started accumulating. And if you got a rainy season here, and that's another issue, the people who have to judge it don't live here year-round. There are many issues that come forward that people judge without living here year-round, because they have no idea what happens here in summertime. So it's, and I really want to, you know, to make sure that people realize how serious that situation is there on Sunrise Drive. And I hope you're aware of it. I think Mike is aware of it, but it is not something that is common knowledge in the community here. That's all I wanted to say, and I hope it's gonna be fixed, and I keep my fingers crossed.
Thank you. Anybody else?
There's an aerial that I'd like to show the public on the TV screen. This is a 1970 aerial of Sunrise Drive and the Deer Run Golf Course. You see where the red circle is? That is a seasonal pond. And yes, when it's a rainy season, it's wet. And that is, that particular case shows that there was a seasonal pond before your homes were built, and the developer built your homes right in the middle of it.
What she said is correct. What we experience, I don't know if everyone in the audience is familiar with El Nino, when we have periods of wet and dry seasons. Usually, when we're not in a completely rainy season, we just experienced the past few years, the water table's down, and you don't really experience as bad a flooding, or you don't really see water in your ditches more than a few hours or a day at most. But when we're in a high rainy season, the water table and the whole area comes up, and that's mostly what you're seeing. The higher the water table, the less ability of the soil to take in more water. So you're seeing water stage up in the ditches, and in this case, it's getting into the road and filling up the driveways, which, being in a wet area where it is, that's where water naturally accumulated in the past. Well, it's been filled in to a degree, but you're still gonna see the same hydrology going on in that area, which is what we're experiencing.
Thank you, Drew. You guys got any comments?
I guess to that point, I counted, there's 24 lots in that circle there, so there's basically three or four people that are complaining about paying to get their driveway fixed, and they're basically speaking for those 24 people. And those 24 people, I think, even though the water might pool on Sunrise Drive, it's still affecting those 24 lots. And to me, and then the other thing is home values. If you have a home on Sunrise Drive and it has a puddle of water in the driveway or in the lawn, to me, if you're trying to sell that home, your value of that house goes down. I wouldn't buy your house if I knew there was a water problem in the front yard. So I think you're making a big to-do about, even though there is a cost involved, it's, I think, long-term, you're making a mistake by trying to fight this, because we're trying to help you. And I agree with option two, that $945 option of cutting just a strip out of there. You're gonna end up replacing that in a couple of years and paying double that again. So it just doesn't make any sense to me, even though, I don't know, that's all I can say about it, it's just, it's, there's a few people speaking for 24 people, and the 24 people, I think if every one of those people came here, you'd be able to vote it anyway. So it's just a matter of continuing to improve the district, continuing to improve the quality of life here, and we need to move forward on this and be done with it.
One thing I would like to point out, supervisor, is that the driveway permit, whenever a new driveway is installed, the driveway permit that there, that we, the district use, I don't know how long it's been in use, I haven't researched that, but I will, but it specifically contains a paragraph where it says, "It is expressly stipulated that this permit is a license for permissive use only," and that "The placing of facilities upon the public or private property pursuant to this permit does not operate to create or to vest any additional property rights to said permitee." So the driveways that exist on the district right-of-way are there by the district's permission. So we have the right to cut them up, and the homeowner would be the one that would be required to replace it. We have no responsibility to replace anything that's in that road right-of-way that we have to remove in order to maintain the drainage.
Thanks, Dave. Larry?
The other thing I think would be important here would be to allow the homeowner to choose whatever option they wanted. So in other words, the seven people that are bringing an issue of this, I think it'd be difficult for them all to agree to the same type of repair. So if the contractor would allow it, I would say to allow, there's really four options here. There's the $2,600 one, the $1,450, or the $945, or don't do anything. We'll just fill it in with gravel, and you can drive on gravel if you want. But I think it'd be important if the homeowner would have the option to pick whichever repair you wanted.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, given them that option. The one thing that I have a problem with is, Drew, as I understand it, this soft pipe would go right in the bottom of the dip. Is that correct?
Correct. It'll, the best they can, it'll be right in the bottom or just to either side of it.
Okay. Well, one of the things, the first one went back 15 feet, and I think the reason it went back 15 feet from the road is it makes one cut, and they have room to work without the sand underneath the driveway giving away and creating a hollow spot. With the three-foot one, and even with the 10-foot one, you're gonna be, that trench is gonna be right next to that, where that concrete cut is. There is no way to keep that sand standing straight up in there and keep it solid. So it's gonna have some pockets in it, and it's gonna crack. And in my opinion, if we give them the choice of the option number one or two, they need to sign something that, hey, we're not responsible if that cracks or breaks a year or two down the road. Because I think we're gonna have a problem with that. And Drew, I think that's the reason it was originally drawed out this way. Is that correct?
For the most part, yes. The bare minimum would be, and my recommendation would be, the option one, where they're still gonna be removing a decent amount, and they can, they can still jog that pipe farther away from it to keep from undermining the adjacent driveway. But the trench, like you're saying, that just doing the trench, the three-to-five-foot trench, would be more of a liability.
Okay. And the problem, like you say, is getting worse. The reason it's getting worse is every house, every driveway that's put in out there gives the water less of a chance, less of a place to go. I see Ron Hanley sitting out here in the audience with, from the county. I am very sure that the county's take on this is, if you live in a county someplace, the tube across your driveway is yours, or if they have to tear up the concrete there, that is still yours. And I think Ron's coming up front.
That's exactly right. The county policy is that if you, if for any reason the drainage has an issue, that the county, if the county has to do it, can take out your driveway, and it is not their expense to replace it. That is throughout the county. And while I'm here, I have to speak as a contractor. That little five-foot sliver is a disaster. Don't do it. I mean, if you can help the folks pay for the bigger pour, because you will have more complaints, there is no way that will stay there, unless you put rebar every eight inches, drill back in both sides, and you're basically creating a bridge there. But it will definitely settle, and you'll have all sorts of issues. So I wouldn't even, I really wouldn't even consider that. That's a big boo-boo for whoever. I know it's cheaper, but you get what you pay for.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
That's all I really have to say about it.
Mark?
No, I'm all set.
Molly?
The only thing I have to say is, I just bought a house about a year ago, and the backside of it is on Columbus, and I wanted to repair the bank there, and it was Sunning Lake land, and Mike Hurley told me, "You can go ahead and do that." So I sawed it up myself, and put in a sprinkler system so it'd work. And he also told me, he said, "We have to come down through there, we're gonna dig up your water irrigation system." I agreed to that. So when Mike comes down there digging it up, he'll tell me, and I'll have to replace it myself. So that's part of doing business.
I too would like to see something there done, because I think it can only get worse, in my opinion. And it's not gonna get better. I'd like to offer, I'd like Kurt's opinion on offering, letting them pick their own, but I'd be more inclined not to let them pick option two, because I think, I'd like to do that.
It's a construction disaster.
Yeah. But that's, any, anything else? This is just a discussion. We're not gonna do anything today. So if there's any other opinions out there, I'm sure we'd like to hear them. Okay. Thank you for attending. Another discussion is on code enforcement.
County Attorney Ross Macbeth presented the code enforcement changes at the last meeting. One thing I would like to bring attention, it was brought to my attention, actually, that there is a statement that he added as a definition of a motor vehicle for golf carts. Motor vehicle is designed and manufactured for operating on a golf course for sporting and recreational purposes that is not capable of exceeding speeds of 20 miles an hour. I'd like to recommend a different definition, because I do believe that there are golf carts, privately-owned golf carts, that do exceed 20 miles, 20 miles an hour in the district. So I'd like, I'd like to recommend a Florida statute definition under 316, which is a motor vehicle designed and manufactured for operating on a golf course for recreational purposes. So it takes out the miles per hour. So I'd like to recommend, if the board is okay with that, to take out the 20 miles an hour.
Any discussion up here?
On page five, I think it is, it's cut off from the bottom, it's on number four, under C. I don't know if it's, we can do this or not, but it talks about unlicensed vehicles and vessels. In other words, they can't be parked on the lot or the property. And my question is, can we put in there that licensed vehicles that are like up on blocks, or it looks like somebody's working on them, you know, they got this idea they're gonna fix a muffler, and they put it up on a ramp or something, and then six months later, it's still sitting there and it's not fixed? Is there some way we can put the same provision on a licensed vehicle as well as a nonlicensed vehicle?
Well, with that "or" in there, what you're describing, I would consider partially dismantled. So anything that's, if they're working on it, you know, if it's, I would say that partially dismantled, non-operating, I mean, both of those would cover the situation you're describing.
Okay, all right. So we could force somebody to remove that vehicle?
Correct. 48 hours is what you get to work on it. Otherwise, you're gonna put it away.
And the only other other comment I'd like to make is, with the assumption we're gonna add sometime in the near future, say within the next budget process, a bulk secured building site where you can store boats and vehicles and whatever you have extra, I would like to see that we have a provision in here that you cannot store any type of trailer on your property. Because the people have a place to take it, and it'll probably be very low cost, if not included in your assessments, that any, I don't care how big the trailer is, what type it is, it's just that, because they are definitely in ISO, or people got trailers leaning up against their house, they got them parked in the driveway. My preference is just no trailers, period. So that's it for me.
Anybody else?
Well, I agree with Kurt. I drove around the other evening to see what trailers, because that really upset me when I heard about you can park trailers outside. And I saw seven that's out about, out and about in the district, and it is, if it's next to your house, you think about, if you want one next to your house, it's been jacked up there for seven years, and it'd be hard to sell your home. So it's just, I'd like to get a reprieve from that, too. If we do get the storage area built, you know, to help those people out, we could reduce costs of some sort, or just a specific area for those, or whatever, you know. And the 18-foot boats and so forth, that comes into question also. 18 feet long, six foot high, and so forth. Like, that's the thing for discussion for the future, when we finally get a cost analysis on this boat and storage area.
Mark?
Yes. I tend to agree with what Curtis said, and Wally, and everybody else on the board. My greater concern is, we put all of these regulations in place, and it's very difficult for us to enforce them. I mean, we have these things in place today, and unfortunately, we can't enforce them. And I'm not quite sure why. I mean, Mike's got his hands full, does a lot of things every day, his crew is tremendous. You've got Bob, I think he's gone now, Brumfield was out here early, oh, he's up there talking to Mike. So we can write all we want, we can put all this code enforcement in the manual, but unless we act upon it, what's the sense of doing it? There are a lot of people that have homeowners' associations, and they're under impressions that certain things can be done, certain things can't be, and they're even have their hands tied, because they can't enforce them. So we can put anything we want in it, but the key is, how do we enforce it?
Well, we can definitely come up with a plan for enforcement. If it's, if, district-wide, if you want to implement a code enforcement policy, no boats, no trailers, period, we will definitely come up with a plan on a way to enforce that, now district-wide. Now, remember I mentioned to you that the homeowners' associations do have their own rules and regulations currently, and no trailers, no boats allowed in our homeowners' associations. But again, it comes back to enforcement. You're correct. But a district-wide code enforcement policy, I mean, we can come up with a plan. Now, the homeowners' associations and their enforcement's completely different, but...
So if you have a district-wide code enforcement, and you have multiple homeowners' associations, such as we do, Manahill has a homeowners' association, Magnolia has an association, Deer Run has an association, that takes precedent, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that takes precedent over the district-wide policy. So if I happen to be part of an association, I can have a boat in my yard, I can have a trailer in my yard, long as it doesn't exceed the dimensions that are outlined. So, I mean, we're still defeating the policy. I mean, we have no way of enforcing it. So I could live in a community that has a homeowners' association, and I believe, you still present? Okay. A homeowners' association, and I can violate everything else that the district says.
No, that's not true. I don't think so. Maybe...
HOAs can only be more restrictive. Just like, like you say, the county, the district cannot implement code enforcements that are less restrictive than the counties. We're all bound by county code enforcement restrictions. The district can choose to enforce more restrictive things over its property, and homeowner, HOAs can enforce more restrictive covenants, but cannot be less restrictive. You can't, you can't avoid county, county code enforcement just by being in the district or in a homeowners' association.
Okay. So I've been contacted recently by somebody that's in a homeowners' association, and their concern is, the homeowners' association isn't enforcing the rules and regulations that have been set forth in the homeowners' association. What is that individual, what can that person do?
That's all based on the HOA.
So they go back to the board of the HOA?
Correct. If they're violating a homeowners' association, a tenant of the HOA covenants, they would talk to the HOA, you know, board, and say, "We want, there should be some sort of," there may or may not be, I don't know, but there should be some sort of, usually a fine, some sort of enforcement provision. But if that, if that violation also violates the county's or the district's code enforcement policies, then they can contract the district or the county and report that, whatever that violation is.
Okay, thank you.
Larry?
I'm good with the, what they've talked about, so...
Dave, I got a question. Somebody the other day told me, I guess they were telling me that if they had a boat, and we changed, that there was no boats, could... and we changed that there was no boats could be set out, that they'd be grandfathered in. Is that...
I don't know that that's necessarily the case. I mean, I can do some research on that, but I mean, it's not like, it's a vessel, it's a mobile structure, it's not their house. You know, usually if there's, if you're opposing new enforcement, like you said, every roof in the district has to have, you know, a slate tile roof or something like that. Obviously, all the old people, all the others, the previous houses would be grandfathered in, but if they had to be, if the roof had to be replaced, it would have to be replaced with that new roof. But a vessel or a boat, no.
So if they had a boat and we passed this and they'd have to...
They'd have to move it.
They'd have to move it. Okay, okay.
So X post factor, that'd go in there, fit in there anywhere?
Not, I would say I can check into it, but not on, mobile structures generally, no, it doesn't affect that.
Okay. Public comment?
Tom Costy, resident. For the last time today, I've got to leave. The, as a former president of the Manor Hill Owners Association, we did quite a study over about a two-year period of all the covenants and restrictions that have been on file for our 360-lot neighborhood with regard to what we can and can't do in Manor Hill. And we also uncovered all of the filings for the district itself that go back over the years. The district, actually, when we talk about county versus the district, the district does operate under a county ordinance. And according to our results, which are confirmed by our association attorney, which also happens to be the district's magistrate, Mr. Mark Breed, the more stringent of restrictions, whether they be county or homeowner association, the more stringent applies. In other words, if we in Manor Hill have got an 18-inch maximum grass height and the district has 12-inch, which does happen to be the case, our 18-inch is really meaningless. The district's 12-inch requirement does apply, does take precedent. And we in Manor Hill say that we've got to approve and supply all the mailboxes. The district isn't going to enforce that, we can enforce it as an association. Before we hired the attorney, before the district hired the attorney to redo our code enforcement, if you look at the writing of the enforcement policy for Sunnilyke, there was, the phrasing in there said that any time there's a repeat violation, that every day of continued violation is a new violation and subject to new fines on a per-day basis. And that's according to the county ordinance under which Sunnilyke operated for years. When this presentation was done by the attorney and Mr. Macbeth actually came in and presented the final writing of it, if you look at or listen to the recording of that meeting and look at the minutes, you'll see that Mr. Macbeth actually, I don't think it's clear in the minutes, but if you listen to the recording, he questioned why we were loosening our enforcement ability by stating that anything that doesn't occur again within a year, it becomes a new violation and subject to all the waiting periods and the weeks and even months that might occur before you could start levying a fine. Where for years, this district, under the county ordinance, was able, any time a repeat violation came up, if it was three or four or five years later, the district could apply a fine immediately without even notifying. I'm sure they had to notify, but my point is that there's a lot of teeth, there was a lot of teeth in that ordinance. However, with what we're looking at right now, it's more lenient in terms of enforcement. And you're right, Mark, I agree with you. If the district isn't going to be willing to enforce this stuff, according to the procedures that have already been in place and have been in place for years, why are we even talking about it? Maybe we ought to just let the county enforce the whole thing. Thank you.
Bill Narkras, resident. We've discussed code enforcement for many, many years and it's probably the enforcement of the codes is a problem. Wally has suggested we have a storage area, which I think is a capital idea, because now there's no excuse for getting rid of a vehicle, a boat, or something like that, that's really bothering all the neighbors. And I think it should be, upon the resident, if they have a violation, another violation, a final warning, a tow truck should come in and pull that vehicle out of there. Now, that's what they do. They boot cars and things in Massachusetts, Mike would know about that, and they will tow you in Massachusetts. And it's the owner's expense to go and get it. If you're arrested for a violation, they will take your vehicle. So look, let's be fair about it and have so many violations, one or two, and that's it. So that would resolve the problem and I think with the storage area and a secure storage area with video and all the police protection that you could possibly have, I think it's a great idea. And let's push it and let's get it done. Thank you.
Anybody else? Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
Yes. Good morning. I'm Tenille Derry Smith, Community Services Director. I just want to go over a couple of things. To date, we do have 138 responses from the surveys. We had a hard copy go out in the last newsletter and that has definitely, there's been a lot of return from that as well as it sparked some more online surveys. So we'll be, we've been accumulating the responses all along, we've been keeping up with it. So at the end of next week, I should be able to send a report out with all of that information to all the supervisors because it does close next Wednesday. In addition to that, we've had 41 responses to, in favor of the RV and boat parking that also own an RV and boat. So we've had several responses where they're, you know, they're in favor of it, but they don't necessarily own one. So we're kind of just looking at those that are interested and actually own an RV or a boat. Last week, I had a conference call with our website management company, Civics Plus, and believe it or not, it's been a year since we launched our new website and we went over some analytics as far as how many visitors we've received. And over the year, we had about 77,000 page views. 21,000 of those were repeaters, so 55,000 of those were, you know, one time where they visited several of our pages. So that was, they said that was pretty, that was a great number. So we'll continue to improve on that. Another interesting aspect was the mobile device analytics they offered. There was 31% of our views down on a mobile device of some sort. So it could have been a tablet or a smartphone. And 21% of those views was actually down on a smartphone. So our mobile app that we paid extra for, I think, was a great investment and we're hoping to, you know, encourage people to go ahead and download the app so they can access all the information, just an easier, it's cleaner on your tablet or your smartphone. So if you haven't downloaded our app yet, it's available on the Android system or the iOS Apple systems as well. Upcoming events, we have our Dash &amp; Die next month on April 15th, the day before Easter. Registrations have already started flowing in for our 5K. We're looking to be on track for about 200 to 300 runners, which is what we've been averaging the past couple of years. And of course, the festival and egg hunt will happen that day as well. Believe it or not, we're starting to plan for summer camp, so that will be upon us before we know it. And then Independence Day celebration will be on July 3rd, which is a Monday this year. So, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sunnilyke Golf Club. Yes, we are coming to the end of our busy season. We've got four or five weeks till the middle of April, which is where we start to see things slow down. And things are going very well. We're busy in the restaurant and on the golf course. Tom Van Ward, who's our Director of Food and Beverage for the Billy Kasper Golf Company, stopped in and worked with us, reviewed our service manuals for our F&amp;B operation with our employees. And basically, we established a goal to make the island view the favorite destination of more people to eat in Sunnilyke and Seabrain. Mike Stevens, our Regional Agronomist, was here on Wednesday and Thursday and was very happy with the progress he's seen with the golf courses. He also worked with us. We've got a ag plan in place, but we're going to update it in more specific terms and have that distributed by the end of April. I think we're continuing more of what we've been working on in the past, which is to work with the soils to make the grass healthier, and that's been successful. One of the things we'll be documenting in the new ag plan is to look at less use of curfew and then replacing it with another product called Indemnify, along with just some extra fertility in the place of curfew. So we see that as a positive because a curfew is an effective product, but it does a lot of damage in the process of when it's doing good. Financially, our budget, year over year through January, our EBITDA, basically our profitability is $38,000 better this year than the same timeframe last year. A big part of that is our outside green fees are up $61,000 in that time, so that's a great number to see. Our membership is off, estimated to be $30,000 to $40,000 off. F&amp;B, our food is on track with last year, but our alcohol's trailing a little bit, 4%, so we've got to get people to drink a little more. Don't know why that is, but we're focusing on service and monitoring our labor to take some corrective action. We are running a little bit over on labor hours and it does show you the challenge of the F&amp;B business because the overage is just a few hours a day here and there, but it does add up. So we do have a plan in place and we are focusing on that, but still wanting to maintain the service levels we've achieved. Our stay-in-place is going well and in the next month, we'll be evaluating and presenting to the supervisors to see about continuing that next year. We're over 80% occupancy for the rest of the year, which we have two units rentable and mostly rented all but a week in April and then one unit in May that has two weeks open and the rest is filled. The people that are staying there have really been very upbeat about the experience. Probably not as many new people to the area as just returning people, but I think it's creating a lot of buzz and a lot of talk. I have a lot of people who stop in my office for the literature, so I think there is really a great awareness of that. The free membership, I've contacted everyone on the free membership that is expiring through March. Actually, the four, the last four that are expiring I contacted, they all are going to take advantage of the extension of the program, which involves putting down the deposit. So, and in my unofficial estimation, I believe two of those four really didn't have an intention of being members next year, but the program got them into the habit of playing more golf than they normally did. So now they're going to take out a membership, so it's working exactly as planned. On a staffing update, I think you're all aware, but just for the record, Tim McGinley has accepted the Director of Golf position at Indian Boundary in Chicago. Tim was here for four years and really did a great job for us, but we're happy for him. You know, this is the path he was hoping for. Scott Fleck will be moving into that position and taking over a lot of those responsibilities. Scott's been doing really a great job and growing very quickly with us. Mike Lemire is taking over the Entom Room, Director of Sales and Marketing position and really doing a great job there. And beyond that, are there any questions?
I just have one because I can't remember what it was. We all talked about this, the cost per month and so forth. Did we agree on $400?
I believe it was $425.
$425.
We kind of rolled the trail fee in, whether they had the card or not, we wanted to just make it one flat line, so it was $425 a month for the extension.
Yeah, I knew that we voted and approved it and so forth, but I just can't remember what the number was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Supervisors. There was a hearing, I believe it was March 3rd, maybe March 7th, March 3rd, if it sounds right, Mr. Koji on the Griffin matter regarding the district's motion to dismiss the counts. He presented an argument and we are hoping to have a ruling by the judge by the 17th. I believe there was questions regarding whether or not we'd be willing to entertain additional discovery, but obviously, there's no, I mean, not discovery, but mediation. We're going to wait and see what the result of that, what that ruling is, and once we have that ruling, we'll decide whether or not it'll be beneficial to enter into additional mediation. The Alamo, there's still, there's been very little movement. There was some additional documentation provided by plaintiff's counsel in response to old discovery requests, basically updating documents. I reached out to Thompson, Sizmore, Gonzalez, who's, you know, co-counsel. They did not have an explanation as far as what, why it was taking so long. And I also reached out to Roper and Roper and hope I should have a, hopefully have a call back from Mr. Roper when I get back to my office today, you know, with what their plan is to try and prod this thing along, because it's been over six months since the hearing and there's still no ruling. So, other than that, have you got any questions?
No. General Manager report?
Tenille Kennedy, General Manager. Duke Energy has installed six new streetlights in Unit 2 on the streets of Florida Avenue, Capri Street, Doraco and Jill Street. The new maintenance building is being delivered today and assembly will begin by the end of next week. So I believe the delivery will be in three different truckloads, I understood, so that should be taking place this morning. We also believe that all the residential homes and the duplexes in the district have been delivered garbage cans. We do know that some of the condominiums have the blue trash cans, but I guess nothing has happened on Edgewater Drive as of this morning, so...
Or Matanzas.
Or Matanzas. So I think they're all still waiting on the garbage cans. But the issue in these areas is that there's really not enough space to, you know, you're supposed to place, I guess, four feet between the blue garbage cans so that the arm of the truck can pick it up. And some of these areas just don't have that kind of space. So I know the homeowners and condominium owners are going to have to work together to see what the solution is for the garbage truck when it comes around. So we're hopeful that all the remaining part of the cans will be delivered by next week. Bids are due for the district roof repairs on Tuesday, March 14th, at 2:00. We had three contractors attend the pre-bid meeting several weeks ago. The blower project at Unit 23 plant is complete, so hopefully all of you have taken a tour of that and a great job to everyone who put forth effort in that project. We are advertising for an electrical engineer to perform an assessment on our water plant and recommend critical electrical repair and upgrades. We will also use this engineer for future improvements, possibly to our wastewater treatment plants, Unit 4 and 23. Also, our first budget workshop is scheduled for May 26th. And I know in addition to that, Jim and Omar will be working with our architect's CMSA for the clubhouse expansion to schedule a workshop for that, hopefully prior to the May 26th budget workshop. We'll let you know.
So that will be a needs assessment workshop, is that what that is?
With the architect?
Yeah.
Actually, I think he's going to work with Kevin right now to perform a needs assessment to try to understand, but that initial workshop, we can make it into a needs assessment-based workshop, of course.
a needs assessment-based workshop, of course, yes.
Okay.
And talk budget as well at that meeting. So, that's all.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
No reports.
Discussion to and from the board?
I've got one. I talked to Mike earlier this week. I think Mike's been working on some drainage with a group, and I'd like to turn it over to Mike a minute. I think he's needing some extra help.
All I can do is give you some pictures of what we've been finding out on Unit 2, where all the fences and our, and our right away, and this is what we're finding. We found four areas that we had to actually go back and take fences and trees out. And right now, as of Monday, we have another area that we have. Right now, that affects four homes, that, that the sewers and the water are, the trees are just engulfed everything.
Go to Mike.
The root systems back there have engulfed into the sewer lines. That's what's happened.
Yep.
And so we've taken out a couple of trees.
Right. We're, right, we're taking down trees, we're taking down fences, we're moving actually a shed, but we have to start addressing these areas, especially out towards the front, the older homes. It's very labor-intensive. We're doing it in-house. Which really works well, because we work with the residents, and anything that we put back in, Sunning Lake, the employees know, know where, all the, all the, the drains and the water are going, which in the past, they don't. We've had a lot of trouble finding water lines, and so I think we really have to start addressing this as much as the drainage. So what I'd like to do is, we're going to need more staff. We're going to need a couple more labors to go in and do this. We save Sunning Lake a lot of money doing it in-house, and the advantage of doing it in-house is the employees know the area, and we can work around the residents. So I'm very, very concerned about this area. We had one lady that, that, that didn't have any drainage in her house for about four months. Finally, Vassal Plumbing contacted us. We went out there with them, and that's what we found of what is, what you're looking at now. So these areas have to be addressed. We have to let, let the residents know not to plant and put fences in the areas where, where the drainage and the water, and also the telephone lines and everything, all run through the back of these homes. So, I mean, I'm very concerned about this. I've, I've got a lot of calls over the last couple of months.
What, are you talking about full-time people or part-time?
I like to get a couple of full-time labors or operators.
And what are you talking about, an hourly wage?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to Tanya. Usually, Omar, I don't know if we bring them, bring them in at... I don't know. We'd have to talk about that.
I think this is something we can talk about during budget.
No.
And we, we'd need to talk about it. But I, I believe that the areas that need to be addressed, I mean, they're having, you know, sewer issues, and the root systems have gone into our, our sewer lines, but that is, is something we can, we can certainly look at.
Okay.
The other areas, we're doing a lot of work in-house, painting the lines, doing concrete work, and since I've taken over, we stepped up that. The employees have been great. They actually want to do, to get more involved in that, and I think it's great for the residents, because we're getting things done quicker also.
Well, that saves the district a lot of money, Chris. Just like that project that you just completed there, if we hire that done, it costs a lot of money.
Right. And time also.
Are you, the two labors you look for, is that next fiscal year, or...
I'd like to get them as soon as possible, because we're running it, well, I mean, yes, probably next year, you know, I mean, if we could get some help now, it'd be great, especially during this time of year.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we're doing a lot of extra than we have in the past.
Right.
A lot.
So that'd, that'd be Tanya and Omar to...
Right.
Mike, is that project behind, or between Matanza and Granada, right?
Yeah.
That's one, and...
Yeah, that's still going.
And that's probably next year, we talked about doing that? I mean, the majority of it? And that was over $100,000?
Yes.
Was it over $100,000?
That's the next year, yes.
Okay.
Yes. But there would be some work that we could go in there and do before, to save us money down the road.
Right. Right. I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about.
Quick question. I'm sorry, quick question. Code enforcement. Do you want to wait and see what the cost analysis is on the RV, trailer, storage, before we bring the code enforcement changes back to the board? Because there's no, no priority that you adopt those changes that was presented by Ross Macbeth last, at the last meeting. Do you want to wait? Or were you wanting to go ahead and take out the provision for trailers and boats now?
Okay, we'll wait.
Would you want to wait?
I was going to meet with Taneele and Mike about that, the work, the cost of it, and the, the contract and so forth, with people under and so forth like that. I'll work with David on that.
Because there are recreational trailers that are parked here in the driveways in the district, but we also have people with businesses as well, you know, mowing businesses and other, other reasons for trailers, you know, so we, we want to be able to address, you know, all aspects of that before we make changes.
Yeah, I agree with that. There's Wally.
Okay. So we'll, we'll hold off on bringing back the, the formal code enforcement changes then. We'll hold off. Okay.
Anything else, Kate?
Nope.
Meeting adjourned.